Just on it tonight. Alright, everyone, uh, it is now six o'clock, so I'm calling our Committee of the Whole meeting for May twenty first to order at six o'clock. And banging the gavel, otherwise I forget to do that. We have been live for a couple minutes.
You never saw that, it was a nice practice.
Good evening, everyone, for the second time. I am calling the meeting to order at six o'clock and banging the gavel to get us off to the races. As is Cochrane's custom, the Deputy Mayor chairs the Committee of the Whole meetings, which is why I am chairing tonight's meeting. Moving on to our next item, we have the adoption of the agenda, and so I am asking for a motion from my colleagues for that. Counselor Reed.
I'll move the adoption as the agenda as presented.
Alright, all in favor? It's passed unanimously, thank you very much. And moving on to the adoption of our previous minutes, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the minutes of May sixth, Committee of the Whole. Counselor Flowers.
I move to adopt the minutes of May sixth, twenty twenty four.
Excellent, thank you very much, all in favor? That is also passed unanimously, thank you very much. We are then moving on to the first of our delegations tonight. Item four A, I'd like to invite Darren Polanski and Kayla Brown of Bold Workshop Architect for their presentation.
Okay, good evening Deputy Mayor and members of Committee of the Whole. It's my pleasure to introduce the delegation from Bold Workshop Architecture and X Y C Design this evening. Represented by Darren Polanski and Kayla Brown, who are both from Bold Workshop. Kate McGregor from X Y C Design was unable to make it this evening. I first met Darren in my former role at the City of Calgary, where he was responsible for identifying underutilized city-owned land available for sale or alternate municipal use. In this role, I started working with Darren on our shared interest in the identification and activation of market-driven and planning policy solutions to housing affordability. In pursuit of the shared interests and a desire to foster a strong working relationship between Cochrane and post-secondary institutions and around Cochrane, Darren and his partners Kayla and Kate met with myself and other members of Cochrane's administration to discuss affordable housing and opportunities to partner with the School of Architecture, Planning and Landscape at the University of Calgary in late last year. I'm happy to share that this relationship-building exercise led to the inclusion of a site within Cochrane in the Work Integrated Learning Program led by Darren and his partners Kayla and Kate. That culminated in the presentation, "We Got Ninety Nine Problems and Housing Is All of Them", which Darren and Kayla are going to walk us through a portion of today. If you're interested in the full presentation, Darren and his partners Kate and Kayla will be sharing their full presentation on May twenty nine, twenty twenty four at the Cochrane Rancho Theater from ten AM to noon. So I'll pass it over to both of them, who will walk you through the Cochrane component of the work that they did.
Right, thank you. I'm Darren Polanski, I'm the co-principal of Bold Workshop Architecture. I'm joined by my co-principal Kayla Brown. Regrettably, Kate McGregor, our collaborator at X Y C Design, could not be here today. Our offices work closely together, co-designing projects, teaching and partnering on developments. A year ago, we proposed a work-integrated learning studio on market-driven affordable housing to the University of Calgary School of Architecture. In September, four final-year master's students joined us to explore creative solutions to the housing crisis our cities are facing. I'm just gonna walk you through some stats here, just to give you a lay of the land. Just real quick, immigration in Alberta is up by fifty-seven thousand people. It's a population increase of over nine percent. Cost of construction is up seventy-nine percent. That's from April twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty- oh, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three. Cost of living is up, obviously. The rent is up from April twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, twenty-four point five percent, which is the largest increase in Canada. And our vacancy rate is less than two percent. An increasing number of individuals and families don't qualify for subsidized housing but can barely afford rising living costs, leaving no room for emergencies, savings, or security. Our projects today focus on a different zone of the housing continuum, which we call market-driven affordable housing. For our purposes, we use CMHC's definition of affordable housing as costing no more than thirty percent of a household's annual pre-tax income. Our work-integrated learning studio with the School of Architecture explored potential of market-driven affordable housing in Calgary and Cochrane. Students developed research supporting alternative models, methods, and policies for achieving housing solutions. We used our students' ideas as the foundation for our routine, for our outline, incorporating our own built work to expand and communicate the architectural concepts. Invisible density, in invisible density, we will be briefly covering existing communities and how they can add density in their current context. And in discernible density, this explores how your growing community of Cochrane can include affordable housing in its growth strategy in an innovative way.
Okay, so there was interest from the people of the administration, of which we previously presented this topic of invisible density on, which we're gonna share with you in addition to the Cochrane study, which Darren is gonna talk about after. So seeming as though only one dwelling exists, there could be one, two, or three units within one volume of your typical single-family house. We will review with you some completed projects and then present a student's conceptual approach to achieving densification in the modern suburbs. So this was a renovation project completed in twenty twenty for a retiree who wanted a comfortable place for herself along with a proper basement suite. What we did is we created a three-bed, three-primary-bath suite for Maura and a one-bed-and-one-bath basement suite. In order to provide a proper front porch for the suite, we had to dig out the foundation on the front of the property. We dug out enough space for some seating and a tiered planter leading up to grade, creating a usable street presence for this basement suite. You can see the entry to the suite on the lower left. The tiered access at grade increases the unit's ability to access natural light, which improves the living conditions for this tenant. This house sat vacant for five years until we completed a new single-family residence and a backyard suite in twenty nineteen. So when you're already building a new home, the incremental cost of adding a laneway is minimal, but the rent collected from this backyard suite assists with a large part of your mortgage payment. This particular suite provided a home for Jimmy. Oh, something happened with the conversion from PDF to PowerPoint, so I'm not, not sure what happened, but anyways. This was a home for Jimmy, who was a young professional, who wanted his own four walls and a front porch, but couldn't yet afford to buy a house. A balcony on a laneway was a new condition for the city when we proposed our design. And from an urban design perspective, these are the front porches of laneways. This is where neighbors will all come out to gather one day, and it's important to include these character elements from day one. The next part of our presentation was developed by our student Natasha Lewinsky, and she has come up with some creative ways to demise typical, single-family suburban homes. When many people enter retirement years, they need less space, and they could access some of the equity in their homes and create another unit for rental income. It's common to divide a house into a basement suite and a main-floor suite, but everyone understands that a basement suite is less desirable than a main-floor residence. And there is another way that we can look at demising these houses. By dividing this twenty-one hundred square foot, three-bed, two-bath house right down the middle, and carefully revising the floor plans, the renovated bungalow now contains two units, each with two beds and one bath, providing access to both the main floor and the basement. The renovated house can fit into the existing neighborhood by incorporating additional porches and windows to match the existing bungalow. This approach preserves the community character and keeps retirees in their homes. This suburban estate home is forty-five hundred square feet. These homes were initially built for a large family, which isn't necessarily the norm these days. This house can be renovated to accommodate not two, but three units with a total of eight beds and five baths, and each unit gets at least two floors of light. Converting an attached garage is a cost-effective way to build up and gain another unit. Renovated front entries, such as we're showing here, can offer semi-private amenity spaces for the residents, giving them each their own identity. Homeowners have a great opportunity in these renovations to tap into existing infrastructure in their house, which can save a lot of money. Contractors have informed us that renovations similar to this one cost around a hundred and twenty-five square feet to build. Comparatively, a new multifamily would cost around three hundred dollars a square foot to build. There is embodied energy in these existing buildings, and we should strive to retain them rather than send them to the landfill. So in summary, providing additional suites in your single-family home or lot can empower homeowners and provide supplemental income while expanding the rental stock. Using contextual character elements such as porches, shutters, and gabled roofs will help integrate these renovated houses into their communities. And now Darren is gonna talk about the proposal for Cochrane.
Thanks. The next scale is discernible density, mid-rise buildings of about four to ten stories. In this project, we're gonna explore the proposal for Cochrane. We all have an idea of the main street of Cochrane, and it probably includes an ice cream at McKay's, but this idea belies the fact that you're growing at an unprecedented rate. From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one, Cochrane's population grew twenty-four percent. That's almost, almost a quarter of households in Cochrane earn less than sixty thousand dollars per year. An affordable rent for that household is fifteen hundred dollars per month. Right now, the average rent of a one-bedroom apartment in Cochrane is about two thousand dollars per month. Part of the reason is that the housing stock available doesn't match the needs of the households that are filling it. Fifty-seven percent of households in the town currently consist of one or two people, but only nineteen percent of the available housing units have less than three bedrooms. The site we decided, the site we decided to study is across the street from the station because it's the hub for the town's transit program, and it also houses business amenities and the incubator support for the community. The site is home to the public library, which is underserving the growing population. In the past year, visits have increased thirty-two percent. Programming has doubled in frequency, and the number of program participants has increased threefold. So how do we achieve expanding services and facilities, providing much-needed housing, and maintain the character of the? Across the street, or across the tracks from the nostalgic Main Street, the setting contrasts with our vision of the traditional western small town. The landscape looks entirely different. The character of this neighborhood is cars. And that makes sense, because sixty-five percent of Cochrane's workforce commutes to Calgary. It's hard to maintain the character of the town when so much of the visible fabric of the city is parking. Our site is at the apex of the sea of asphalt. A typical development for this lot would involve constructing a five- or six-story building at the back and placing a parking lot in front. We think we have a better way to go about developing this location. I'm gonna take a bit of a detour here to discuss a relevant project that X Y C completed a few years ago. In twenty nineteen, X Y C developed M-two, a mixed-use building on a small constrained lot in a prominent location, similar to the Cochrane site proposal. At only twenty-five thousand square feet, it includes spaces for a restaurant, retail, and has offices with a residential component on top. Setting back terraces on upper levels bring occupants out of the building and into dialogue with events and pedestrians on the plaza. Okay, these graphics are getting funky here. Similar to M-two, we're trying to capture multiple programs within a single project. There's the library, housing that's small and affordable, and the sidewalk, by which we mean roads, by which we mean cars and parking. So how can those all successfully coexist? Western towns already have an architectural language, the false front. It's a way to expand the front facade of a building to create an active commercial presence. We propose wrapping the parking in a program area to create a contemporary false front. This false front provides public amenities, good pedestrian connections, and activates small, street-facing destination commercial. With parking taking up most of the grand floor and amenity areas created on the second story reminiscent of the terraces at M-two, for library visitors and residents to enjoy. The corner of the grand floor, on the corner of the grand floor, the library opens up to both the main streets. Meanwhile, the residents are positioned to the side for privacy. The idea of the false front, frontage becomes a program zone navigating through the project. The strategy of wrapping the program is to provide tertiary zones for resting and play, growing, and eating and shopping. So the false front zone gets these three distinct manifestations as it moves through the site. Between the library and street, it can become a playful and thoughtful way to transition into the library. Between the residential and the library becomes a community garden zone, allowing apartments and residents to access the outdoor area. The street frontage is lined with small-scale commercial. And the two buildings, the library and residential, interact but remain separate. This is critical because MLI Select Program from CMHC, which enables financing for affordable housing, stipulates that no more than ten percent of the apartment building's area can be used for secondary use. By offering twenty-five percent of the units at affordable rents, which is eleven hundred and thirty-two dollars a month in Cochrane, new construction qualifies for longer amortization, higher loan-to-value ratios, and a debt service coverage ratio of one, one point one. This eases the financing burdens of construction loans while ensuring long-term affordability for the apartments. In this simple layout, we've achieved seventy-nine one-bedroom, eighteen two-bedroom apartments, plus eight live-work units on the amenity level. Live-work units could support more small businesses and connect to the incubator initiatives at the station. While this one project by no means, oh gosh, okay, by no means fully addresses the challenges faced by the town, it demonstrates there is a different way for Cochrane to imagine its way forward as it continues to expand. To encourage innovative development like this, Cochrane could investigate partnerships with developers for ninety-nine-year leases. Infrastructure costs, the town could build the library and supporting platform for the parking structure and the housing benefits from this infrastructure investment. TOD development, it could be considered part of as a larger TOD strategy. Mixed-market housing strategy, it could consider a development to contribute to the programming of the station's incubator and small-business development programs, or initiate pilot programs with private-public partnerships due to the library component and infrastructure costs.
Okay, so basically, there's been a lot of talk and focus at the bottom end of the spectrum, but all of these zones are experiencing pressure. When people from one zone can no longer afford to live within their current zone of the continuum, they are forced to shift to the left. And what this is doing is putting downward pressure on the entire spectrum, and it results in more and more people reaching the point of needing subsidized housing. We need to be working at all housing scales and all zones of this continuum simultaneously to relieve this pressure. There is no one-size-fits-all solution. These projects that we've explored in our lecture call on private citizens and developers to work with the public sector and lean into each other's strengths to deliver high-quality, cost-effective, and innovative housing solutions. And that's, that's all for our condensed presentation today. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much for your condensed presentation.
You're welcome.
You did a great job.
Sorry if it was still a bit long.
No, please, no worries. The affordable housing and of course, the housing needs, I mean, you've spoken to so many of the problems and challenges we're facing, not only in Cochrane but across the country. How do we provide, how do we make sure that everyone has a home that they can afford to live in? And so it's a big challenge, and we need to, as a group, start looking at different solutions, so I'm sure our group will draw out more information from you. So just turning to the bench, Counselor Wilson, over to you.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Darren and Kayla. I had a question in specific about Cochrane, and when we're talking about invisible density. What, what, have you had enough time to actually study our, our local bylaws and, and see what's holding Cochrane back from achieving better invisible density? Obviously, there's all kinds of land-use bylaw rules that can inhibit that, so any thoughts on that?
No, you know what? We haven't explored Cochrane's land-use bylaw through the lens of invisible density. We're just very immersed in Calgary's with the blanket upzoning as well being at the forefront. So we kind of know Calgary's like the back of our hand, and we haven't taken a deep dive into Cochrane's, but we do know, just from talking with Mark and other members of your administration, we do know off, like, offhand that parking is a real challenge. We talked about that together with these guys. But we haven't, we haven't looked at this or evaluated the invisible density through the lens of Cochrane's land-use bylaw.
Do you have any other nuggets of gold, just on that thought process, that often end up being barriers to achieving that, just in your standard community? You just said parking's one, I could have listed that one probably as a.
Oh my gosh.
There's lots. Like, well, I mean, as, I don't know if you followed Calgary's upzoning sessions over the past sixteen days or so, but, you know, some of the common concerns there, I don't think the public understood what densification meant and what it could look like. You know, there were fears, like, it's gonna be three stories above my little bungalow, which is not necessarily the case, you know. Or they, they don't really have clear examples of what these things looked like in their context that were actually designed for their context. So those were the two other fears.
Yeah, like, so we've been getting a lot of feedback from, just whoever we'd been presenting this to or talking to people, is like, I don't want, you know, a laneway in my backyard, but if it looks like that laneway that you're showing me, that's actually not that bad. And so I think what the city didn't do as well as they could is maybe show people examples, like, real examples of, like, nice spaces that could exist, and I think that that can go a long way, if people can really visualize what these things look like, which isn't necessarily a land-use bylaw tangible item, but it's just a way of communicating what it could look like to the public. I think that when people see that they could be really nice spaces and they're thoughtfully considered and integrated, that could go a long way, just with taking some next steps. But the parking was, so we will, we are gonna be seeing some amendments to our, it's RCG, which is the zoning, which would allow things like we're showing you, like the invisible density with more than two units. And we're gonna be seeing some amendments to the land-use bylaw, and one is for sure parking, so if you can learn from our amendments, it's parking, so that is the number one concern. Another one is actually gonna be, and I don't know if you know more about this than I do, more input and feedback from the public during the development permit application stage. And we don't know what that looks like yet, but that would be something to, to definitely watch out for and, and dig into. And it should be coming out, I think that should be coming out pretty soon, the changes to the land-use bylaw.
September, I think, is when it gets finalized.
So kind of soon.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but I think we might have to look at it from, after we would dive into the land-use bylaw here.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like there's, there's almost two different worlds. The world you just talked about, existing communities, I believe. And then the other world is communities that haven't been zoned yet and new communities to be built still. Is that, are there similarities there? Or is it a whole, whole new thing when you're talking about a new community and?
Oh, within Calgary?
Oh, within Cochrane I'm talking about, just within our concept. I, I think most of what you just said, when you're talking about that, it sounds to me, when, when you're trying to achieve, I'm looking for your wording, invisible density in an existing community, that, what you said makes a lot of sense. If you're trying to achieve that in a new community that hasn't even been built yet, is it the same principles, or is it a totally different conversation then?
I would say, yeah, same, same principles, same planning principles, like, I don't think there's much difference.
The built form, it could be similar, but for example, like, if you were to have four units in one, and to have it look like a house from day one, I, I think it would be easier than renovating, to be honest, like. But if you had a, like, there's some people that have the mindset, like, if it looks like a house and acts like a house, then therefore it is a house, and that's what people would like to see. That's great, and you can put in many units as you, as you can fit and the design will allow. It just would be easier from day one, I think, but if that's like a principle from like a design standpoint that you wanna take, I think that that would be fine. You just have a little bit more flexibility when you're starting it fresh, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if that's helpful or not.
It is. Thanks. Thanks for the thought-provoking conversation. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, no problem. Alright, Counselor Reed.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I thought it was really thoughtful and I appreciate it. I'm wondering, will it be available to us on our website as Counselor's grade? I was gonna say, just a year ago, Counselor Wilson, Drew Hyman, and the mayor and I attended a conference in Toronto. It was a year ago, wasn't it? A year ago. And they had arranged for a tour to go and see some of the building requirements that they had done and some of the innovative techniques they had. So they had laneway houses and a number of things actually that you pointed to, but. And, you know, I often thought, well, you know, big city, how do we apply that to little Cochrane? Well, there, there were some planning principles that were really common, that could be transcend both of our communities, obviously in a Massimore scale in Toronto than our community, but principles that I thought were worth, worth, worth looking at. One of them, the last, when I think the last stop that we had on our tour was a need for affordable housing. And they needed affordable housing in a cost-effective, in a timely manner. And, and so they used C-cans, where they put, I think it was fifty-five C-cans together. You would have never known that there were C-cans, and I think they built that building in three months. And it was pretty innovative in terms of, I, there was somebody across the street that Jeff talked to, and I don't know if they're really happy about that, that many people, that kind of density in their neighborhood, because it was an older part of Toronto. But, but it was really effective in terms of being able to do that. And so it's not lost, I mean, that some of the suggestions that you have and some of those that we saw in Toronto are transferable, even in this case, Calgary to Cochrane, in terms of our community and being able to move it forward. In my personal opinion is, I think we need not only some affordable, cost-effective, innovative solutions, but we need them now, right? And your point about, you know, there are challenges all along that spectrum is, is bang on. And I'm not sure how or when we do that, but I know that we need to be thoughtful of that and be mindful of that. And I set a task to be able to address that, so, so thank you for your presentation.
Thanks for having us.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Fedeco.
Thanks for the information. A couple of questions. So I guess you guys would do the design work, kind of like you laid out here, and then do you sell that plan to a builder of some sort? Or I'm just curious as to how that all comes together from the implementation of what you're showing there to actually having units?
Which, specifically which ones, like all of them or any, or just generally?
Yeah, I guess like, you know, you have the library on the ground floor, you got units all above. Just like, who, who's actually, you're doing, you're showing the design, but who's actually doing the building? And what does that look like? Who's, who's actually taking control of it?
Well, there's, I think there's like, a number of different ways that this particular scenario could work. In this case, yeah, we, we designed it. We do development in our office as well, so X Y C Design is a developer. And so Kate developed the M-two building, which is back a little bit. So I think, I think it depends, like, do you have an answer, like, a more specific answer? Because it could be, like, we would design it, this is a building of a scale that needs to be stamped by an architect, so these projects need to be taken through from conception to completion with an architect, and they need to be stamped. So an architect like ourselves would be involved for the entire duration of the project and administering it. There's no way that we could be a development partner fully on this project, because we just don't have the capital, but you would need a development partner, maybe that's CMHC?
Maybe, yeah. I mean, like, the goal of, of this particular project was just a conceptual investigation.
Yeah, it was an ideas.
It was kind of based on research. We, we saw, you know, all of these needs compounding on, on Cochrane, and we're like, well, wouldn't it be great if we did, you know, study on it with our students? And so then we took that and evolved it into this, and so, you know, who knows what this could turn into? Maybe it could turn into, maybe someone here is just like, you know, we could actually do a feasibility study on the site and see what could be put on here realistically. And so, you know, that would be an idealistic, or a realistic outcome for this, or, you know, who knows? Maybe you guys wanna just kind of hand over the deed after this meeting, and we can get our shovels out of the trough and start digging.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I mean, I think the biggest, the biggest thing that we hear in Cochrane is that, you know, when you're talking about a four to ten-story building, is that we have to bring along the rest of the town to actually want to see that interface anywhere in our community, whether or not it's in the downtown core, whether or not it's on the outside of our, of our boundaries. And, and I'd be curious as to how you, you know, I mean, and this is just maybe something to think about going forward as to how you would bring the community along with you, because that is the biggest factor. It, it's not about, I think we all sit around this table and we all agree that having affordable housing is something key, but building a ten-story building out in the middle of downtown is something that probably everybody is going to start flagging as what they don't want, right? So I think there's lots of conversations there. And they, I, I think there are some things that we could investigate as a community, that COCTAX has a grant, grant opportunity, where people who've been developing secondary suites, they actually get five or ten thousand dollars. I think they're still operating that grant program. But if you have like an existing basement suite, you can actually apply to get a grant. If you wanna do a new secondary suite, you can apply and get some sort of money, and it obviously goes up to a certain amount. I like the idea of offering different housing opportunities, but also we have a lot of different rentals coming on board right now. And it'll be interesting to see how much that takes the pressure off of the rental all the way across the board. I will say that I do notice that rental prices are coming down. They aren't nearly as high as what they were, probably go back even eight months ago. They're starting to, they're starting to level out, so I think it's just something for us to be able to watch. But I don't disagree that, you know, going forward, we need to offer more opportunity. But I think the biggest question is, is that you have to bring the community along with it, because I don't think anybody sitting around this table wants to build something that the community will despise us, right? And so that would just be my only thoughts on that.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think with something like this, you would, you would take the community along with you every step of the way, you know, get their input. Like, is a library like the best choice? Like, like, do you want something else here?
Could be something else, yeah.
So you have to kind of get their input along the way and help them craft that, that project.
Counselor Flowers?
Hi. Could you remind me when the full presentation's gonna be?
The twenty-ninth. The twenty ninth.
Yes, the twenty ninth, right?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
At what time?
Ten to twelve, yes.
Uh through the chair, councillor Flowers, yes, there's a community growth symposium that we're hosting to do an overview of the presentation that we have from uh Urban Three, as well as these fine folks here today that are also coming in, so uh ten AM till noon and be happy to pass on that information as well.
And we're doing the full presentation, right, Mark?
Correct.
Yeah, so the full presentation is an hour, is it, is expanded versions of these two and then includes two other scales?
More examples?
Yeah, we, yeah, we think you guys will also really like the 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 second scale, which comes after invisible, which is in between invisible and this study.
Thank you. So the idea about the library, did you talk to the library or is it just an idea that?
Just an idea, yeah, yeah. Just a need that we we found through researching the town.
Right. And so if we had other ideas, you said that the students could get involved with um doing a assessment of something else?
Well, so we teach um uh work integrated learning studio with the University of Calgary and we teach, it's once a year, so I think it's, is it gonna be in September again?
I think so.
So yeah, basically how it works is if there's ideas that you'd want the students to explore, we have to kind of craft the idea and craft a a brief and then we would pitch it to the University of Calgary, so that's how that works and so sometimes they accept, sometimes depending on the mandate of the year and the other professors involved, sometimes it doesn't get selected, but we we do feasibility studies on ideas um all the time, so it's something that we could, we'd be happy to help you with.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you very much, uh Mayor Janong, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate the presentation tonight. Um I just wanna start my comments by uh framing that we are not investigating a blanket rezoning for Cochrane. Um and we all laugh, but I I've actually received quite a few resident inquiries about, you guys aren't looking at that, right? And I think you've uh accurately um you know, shared with us that there was a lot of misinformation, a lot of misunderstanding about what's happening in the city. Um but yeah, I just wanted to start the comment with with that in case this conversation leads to to that kind of notion in our community. So no, uh there, I was pretty clear. Um I do appreciate though the mixed and multi-use site um idea, I think it's a creative way of I mean, we've heard from Urban Three that uh Mark has referenced as will be part of that housing or that uh program on on the twenty ninth, uh and we're looking at maximizing and efficiently using lands that we have and uh through that program, you know, trying to to uh really drive the the not just density, but the the value in a in a piece of property, specifically city or community owned lands that we have influence over. Uh so I really like the the approach of, you know, if we're, you've chosen library, but it could be any municipal function, um and I think traditionally we've looked at a single use on a property and that's how you, I think you began your presentation, big parking lot, one building. It's it's the old library or it's the old rec center or it's the old whatever. Um but I really like that idea of mixing the uses and actually checking a few boxes along the way, affordability and housing being one of them, but also the commercial, the pedestrian oriented walkability connection, um it's it's interesting, I I really appreciate the idea and it it is thought provoking and I I think we need to start start thinking in these ways and especially, I would say, a library and I think you've picked a good one, um that if we were to build that by itself and fundraised or tax supported or grant supported, it, our ability to build that is is limited. But if we maximize the efficiencies and the the outputs, um we actually might be able to afford to build that and and subsidize that with the with the housing or the commercial. So really appreciate your presentation, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Councillor Nagel, over to you.
Uh yeah, just seeking a bit of clarification on the process, um so is this conversation more of a theoretical conversation to explore the the ideas uh behind your urban planning or is this like a project we're actually considering doing on top of the library?
I think that's a question for you guys. Like this was just an ideas thing for us, like we just we had um four different students and so we explored four different scales and we like Mark and yeah.
I'm happy to jump in there.
Yeah, you should jump in.
Through the chair councillor Nagel, this was uh really the result of us trying to develop a partnership and a stronger relationship with uh post-secondary institutions and around Cochrane, but it's not our formal project that we're pursuing, just an opportunity as we navigate Invision Cochrane twenty fifty to show some ideas and some concepts about how to navigate um the challenges that we face today and uh and an opportunity to say thank you to um our partners that are here today and the students that participated in the program. So they could see the work they put in uh presented to um the council, the community, they did it, so.
Yeah, I I think the presentation and the concepts are all very interesting. I think we need to be a little gentle and delicate how we discuss this all, cause our library is going through an active planning process and having this presentation come here today um being discussed in a semi-serious capacity without any input from the library, who is actively planning for their future feels a little um, it feels a little like it could potentially blindside the library that we're having this conversation. And I think we just need to be careful how we give these presentations and how we deal with the library and if this conversation is gonna become more serious, I think it's absolutely critical, we reach out to the library uh and actually get their input and get their involvement so they can be up here as part of this conversation, instead of us just having this conversation without them. So those are my comments.
And uh sorry, through the chair, uh councillor Nagel, just uh to give you some reassurance, we have uh had conversations with the library to let them know that the conceptual study of could possibly be possible, um they are aware.
Excellent. Um yeah, and sorry, I certainly took your presentation as a you know, knowledge is power and here's here's some different ways that we can, we can approach and try to come up with the different solutions to our need for affordable housing um throughout our community, so it was very interesting and and I don't know, I'll have to maybe lean on my colleagues here and see and your availability to see if we could get, you know, part two of your presentation, cause I would like to see uh the students approach to the other scales um as well, um cause it definitely some intriguing ideas, I know just on the ideas you had around kind of the the hidden density and the intensification, um I know we've had a fair number of kind of laneway developments in the east end, those larger properties have have stepped in and we do have some of those that are blending quite well uh into the east end. Um in sunset, at one point, not too far ago, the land use bylaw allowed the developer to uh put in basement suites, up to ten percent of the development. Um and the developer saw the need and was putting in all of the building those basement suite units all up front, um and uh I think it was was meeting a market need, but it did cause our community some concerns, so I think we've backed away and there's been a change to that land use bylaw, but to your point of uh building this capacity at the time of build as opposed to retrofitting, um is a simpler approach to getting there, cause um those houses, of course, would not be forced to then use their basement suite, it was just built and ready for them. Um following up on councillor Fedeco's uh points, um a lot of uh the 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 need to kind of solve and be part of the solution for affordable housing, um intensification, densification, these are really uncomfortable conversations for our community. Uh folks are like, I moved out here for the small town feel, the last thing I wanna do is have it feel like the city I just moved from, and so there's that, you know, we need it to to look and feel small town and have good parking. Um i- is kind of the magic solution, I think, for finding a way to make a a density work in Cochrane. Um but yeah, so that gentle density piece is really good, um and I really liked uh your approach um to dealing with the the library and I was super excited, I'm glad they've been allowed in on, that we were chatting about this as a concept. Because it is a real need in our community and in your work with them. Um had you looked at, like in your initial drafts, what their actually square footage demand was in that concept, like can we do housing, parking and the square footage they're looking for in a new library?
We uh, well, this concept specifically was able to park with a parking shown, like the, all the residents in the building uh and accommodate for um the library visitors. And that was with one story below just where where the library was and then the surface parking there. Um I can't remember the numbers off offhand, but it was close to what the parking recommendations would be for library type building.
Type thing, yeah, so but the the size of the library you'd imagined, does that fit the size of the library that our library board is saying they're gonna need in the future? Or did you just kind of transplant the existing size?
Uh no, this this is bigger, I can't remember the square footage, I I wanna say it's double the the square footage.
It might be double what you currently have.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to understand if your imaginations was looking and understanding their their needs or if it was just kind of a concept of what's already there, so yeah, thank you for that clarification. Um yeah, like I said, I would love the opportunity, I'm not sure if I can make the May twenty ninth work, but it would be great um to kind of see part two of your scale, so um just before I turn it over to my colleagues, were there anything in your condensed version you wanted to highlight for my co- for our bench?
Just that, I would say in the invisible density section, um we have not, like the the stuff that was tertiary suite, so the three bedrooms within one dwelling, those were all also ideas, those were not, we haven't completed any projects like that. Um those would be something that would be fun to do and we may try one. Um but those were just all ideas at this point as well, the only built completed projects were the ones that we specified were built, the rest were just ideas that hopefully someone in, you know, someone in the city of Calgary may wanna do a resident or maybe we wanna do. But yeah, we haven't explored them, uh personally, they're just ideas.
And one other thing maybe to note to conclude on is is probably one of the things we're lur- we're researching in the office and hopefully we'll achieve funding for is a, is a guidebook. That will help educate the public and, you know, probably help planners or communities, not just Cochrane, but maybe other communities on how you can densify these existing and proposed neighborhoods in a sensible way using contextual elements, so that's a project that we're just starting to work on now and hopefully we'll have that available, I don't know, sometime soon.
Yeah, it's, we're gonna be like calling it maybe the invisible density guidebook and hopefully get some grant money to develop.
Yeah.
That.
Perfect. All right, I will uh turn it back over to councillor Fedeco.
Uh yeah, I I really, I'm quite interested in that whole dense finally turning three suites in from one house, right? I guess it would probably be a change, maybe a bylaws, I mean, I think some of the the challenges that our community has is living within our own home bylaws to make a legal actual suite, right, having zone heating, things like that, you still have to make the project affordable for people to be able to take one particular house and turn it into three suites and that's going to probably be a little bit of a challenge unless we address some of those issues. And then there comes the whole issue is what BC is going through right now with Airbnb stuff and how you know, uh short-term rentals and Airbnbs, you've gotta live on the property unless you're a short-term rental. There's a lot of things that I think that we need to consider long term as to if all of a sudden the government steps in and said, or provincial, federal, whatever that looks like and says, yeah, no, um we're slamming down on this, because now you're gonna have a bunch of people in BC who are challenged frankly, because they bought rental units thinking that they could Airbnb it out, now they can't. Um and my last only comment was, have you had a conversation with the Cochrane Society of Housing Options here in town? As the ones who have actually done incredible research is kind of what our demand looks like, what they're looking for, and I guess maybe I would suggest maybe having that conversation to see if there could be a a group partnership um where both of you work together, because I think they have a wealth of knowledge as to what our particular demand is right now, so um that's that's kind of it, but yeah, I I like the idea of the the three uh three suites, I think there would just be definitely some things we'd have to work on from a bylaw issue.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. I think um that has uh answered the benches' questions for tonight, but uh uh Ms. Brown, Mr. Polanski, thank you very much uh for your presentation and your intriguing ideas. Um and hopefully it'll drive a little bit more conversation around our bench on how uh Cochrane can step up and and address this housing need, so thank you very much for your time and hopefully we'll see you again.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. All right, um let's move on to solving other community challenges with item four B. Uh Cochrane Area Health Foundation, uh would like to invite uh Mr. Brian Winters and his team up to present.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and Councillor, it's a privilege for us as a health foundation to be here. I wanna take you back to the fall of two thousand twenty-two where in the basement of the Legion, our EMS committee was meeting and someone said that there was gonna be a gala in Erdry with respect to the Erdry and Health Foundation. A question came up, why doesn't Cochrane have a health foundation? So we had the executive director of Erdry come and speak to us, uh we had about forty-five people in attendance. And she shared the story where her son passed away in Erdry uh in the evening, uh where there was no access to emergency care. She also suggested the next year, her daughter got sick and she had to fight a snowstorm going uh to Didsbury. So of the forty-five people that actually attended, we have seventeen people that said they'd sign up to help form a foundation. From there, we have ten trustees and several adherents members who meet monthly to improve healthcare in Cochrane. My philosophy is when I steer the foundation ship, when it comes out of the harbor is to ensure I have good working people around me and people that have more expertise than me. And let me tell you, that's what we have in the Cochrane Area Health Foundation. A couple of examples are we have a trustee who's had his whole life in sales and he's our community uh business trustee. And I'm sure he could sell a screen door on a submarine. The next one, we have a lady who's had forty years of fundraising experience where she's been working with corporations and foundations. We also have our vice chair and a trustee who has forty years of experience uh in the medical field. And our vice chair had a medical uh operation in Cochrane for for forty years. We also have a communica- a communication trustee uh who looks after a communication and a webpage with the last name of Kimmett, and I'm sure you know that name very popular in Cochrane. So I want to introduce Reed Kimmett, who is our communication trustee.
Hi, everyone. Um yeah, thanks for having us here today. All ad, I was a couple minutes late, I was coaching my daughter's three and four-year-old soccer team, so it's a pleasure to be in front of my second esteemed audience of the night. So yeah, my name is Reed Kimmett, my day job is the owner and operations manager of Two Pharmacy here in Cochrane. Uh but like many of our board members, I have deep roots in Cochrane, I care a lot about this community and the citizens in it, which led me to contacting Brian and Dennis and joining the Health Foundation. Uh so just to add a little bit to what Dennis said, um uh the entire board is made up of people that live and breathe Cochrane and have for decades and decades. Uh Brian has lived in Cochrane for, I believe, in excess of forty years, was once the fire chief in Cochrane. Uh Dennis was a family physician in Cochrane for over forty years, was my family physician for thirty-three years. Uh I remember when he was leaving, he's, he told me that he didn't wanna retire before he had a home for all of his patients, and unfortunately, that didn't exactly play out that way. But yet, three years later, I see Dennis here with the Health Foundation, trying to fulfill that promise to the community, to all his patients trying to make sure we have access to healthcare. Uh so our mission is that we are, uh I realize this slide needed to be updated based off some news we got last week, but we are now a not-for-profit charitable foundation created to improve the quality, provision and access to healthcare for the people of Cochrane and the surrounding area. The Cochrane Area Health Foundation is committed to work with the public, AHS and community partners to promote, evaluate, fundraise, educate and advocate for the improvement of healthcare and urgent care services. So our vision is that we want Cochrane to be recognized as a leader in enhancing our community health and wellbeing. And our values, again, we got together in the basement of the Legion, we got, kind of had everyone sort of hash out what they saw, the flaws were in the healthcare system, the role we could provide and what we have stood for, so that was accountability, transparency, inclusion, trust and collaboration. So then to get to some of the things that have been going on, uh we've attended the Cochrane Trade Show the last two years. Uh both times with the goal being to just raise awareness, let people know that there is a health foundation uh that we are now accepting donations, that actually happened two days before the the trade show this year. Um and just creating some level of engagement with us, uh last year we emphasized doing a survey so people could talk about the challenges that they see and feel and perceive with our healthcare system. Uh so then, now we have just completed our first project, uh there's a new program in the Cochrane Urgent Care where if a person goes to urgent care or emergent care for a pediatric patient, they can then come for follow-up at the urgent care center, uh therefore avoiding unnecessary trips into the city, necessarily bogging down the children's hospital other things like that. But it was just happening in a regular patient room, there was nothing um sort of centered towards kids, equipment for kids that kind of thing, so they reached out to us that they wanted to enhance this room, they wanted to get some new equipment to make it more um accessible and friendly for families and for for child patients, so I think Uh, so then our our big news that came just a couple of weeks ago that I alluded to is we received our charitable status. Uh, with that, uh, we've kind of had a number of coals on the fire waiting for us to get our charitable status, which the CRA um made a relatively fun process for us. Um, so we've been named the primary benefactor of the Monumental Tournament of Aces, which is held Saturday, October fifth. Uh, we are gonna use those funds to um start to go towards some of the projects that our board member Scott Holland from AHS has provided to us with uh with input from his team at the Cochrane Community Health Center. So some future projects that have been discussed, uh, they would like to do some enhancements to the security and privacy of the triage area. Right now, anyone can come, anyone can go. Uh, you can't essentially lock down or separate people in the case of a um domestic violence situation or something like that. Uh, also, the triage area is essentially right in the waiting area, so you're having what can likely be a very private conversation right around a whole bunch of people who are sitting there. So they want to make some improvements to that. They want to put wall suction throughout the entire urgent care. Right now, it's my understanding they have some mobile suction units, but there's not enough for every single room and it's not in every room, so um, that's something that you need right away. They also would like a slit lamp, which can be used. For some complicated eye procedures to to look into eyes and see what's going on. Uh, and last, not every room in there has a stretcher, so they are looking for some additional stretchers. Uh, so that's just an example of some future projects that we're looking to fundraise for and support them in in uh providing to our town. Um, so yeah, with that, thank you uh from the myself, from the Cochrane Area Health Foundation. QR code, there is a link to donate if you are interested. And the last thing I would put to to council is if you guys hear of any events that are looking for a benefactor, we'd really appreciate a referral. Uh, if that were the mayor's invitational golf tournament, that would be great too, but uh yeah, any anything you guys see, we'd love to hear from you guys and collaborate with you. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Kimmett, Mr. Winters. It's uh great to see this project. I know you've worked at it for so so long. Probably doesn't, I don't know if it seems like quick or fast to you guys, but um certainly kudos on getting your charitable status. Um, that will certainly allow you to be uh more impactful and and congrats on the great win and making those rooms a little bit more friendly. So I will uh turn to the bench for some questions. Uh, Councilor Fedeko, leave us off, please.
Uh, thanks for the presentation. Uh, I remember like the first, I think, even before there was a citizen action group for EMS. I mean, I still remember meeting in the top, I think the mayor was there as well, so uh we've we've come a long way, I guess, uh, when it comes to health. Uh, health promotion within our community. So kudos to all of your board. I know it's a lot of work and I know you guys have done a lot of work to get this far. Um, on your website, thecochranehealthfoundation dot C, I imagine the QR code is there that we could share out perhaps?
Yeah, I need to do that update on the website. That'll be live tomorrow at noon.
Pressure's on now.
This is all really new stuff. It just just came through, yeah.
Awesome. I I'd be happy to share that out and and start that promotion. Um, I I think the biggest thing is is number one, what can council do to help you promote other than kind of sharing that fundraising aspect? Um, I see that we are getting more doctors, which is um and more health clinics here, which is a huge, huge uh bonus. But I know that for a lot of people, there there's still a challenge with the hours of urgent care. Is it something that we should be advocating or or helping you along, or is there a push-up you could jointly work together to look at trying to increase those hours a little bit throughout the community overall as we go forward?
Thanks for the question. Uh, we we are looking at maybe uh doing a a stage approach to urgent care. As you know, it's open from eight AM to ten PM. Uh, and we have sent a letter to the health minister to ask her and her team to tour the urgent care. But uh, we also are looking at maybe extending the hours, maybe open at six and close at midnight. They also have teamed up during the daytime to prevent the backlog by having more doctors and triage nurses there. Uh, and they're telling us that they're getting out uh better than they were uh when they when they opened. Uh, but our our ultimate goal uh of our foundation is to have a twenty-four-seven urgent care. But we have to sort of do it in steps and we got to work closely with AHS uh with with that project.
Yeah, fair enough. I think we've all seen kind of what happened out in Erdry, although you know, you can have a twenty-four-hour healthcare center. I mean, you have to be able to staff it and you have to be able to have the monies to be able to come in and provide that service, even if you're running twenty-four hours. So happy to help in whatever way I can. Please keep us informed as to what we can do, even between obviously presentations to council. Uh, please reach out and uh allow us to help and use our networks to help share that word.
Thank you, Councilor Fedeko. Mayor Janon.
Yeah, much the same comments from me. Um, congrats on your non-for-profit status. I know that takes a bit of hoops to jump through and uh kudos to you and your board for sticking with it. And as Councilor Fedeko has kind of referenced, I mean, we do have our advocacy campaign. Uh, I think I brought to the Citizen Action Group the the efforts that we're doing as a community in in that regard. And while we have um identified, and I'm not very many people realize this, maybe uh as a resident, but that's not really a community, our community's jurisdiction, it's the province, AHS, et cetera. But we do have a role to play and obviously there are gaps in the in the system that AHS is providing. So I thank you for the your efforts in in trying to help our community in filling those. Uh, and as Councilor Fedeko has pointed out, I mean, I think for us, it's about each and I think I I shared this to the EMS Action Group as well, is that there are things that your group can do that we can't do. There are things that we can do that you can't do, and when we stay in our camps, um, we can achieve them together. And as long as we're keeping each other informed along the way, I think that's the way we'll see most success in the future. Uh, and we want all the same thing, and that's uh health for our and well-being for our residents, right? Regardless of whose jurisdiction it is. So uh, really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you're doing for our community. It means a lot. Uh, I don't know if, and also it's probably a little bit um I don't know, goes unrecognized, I guess, uh, the work that you're doing on behalf of our community. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Janon. Council Flowers.
Thanks for all the information. Boy, it's impressive. You've come a long way and accomplished a lot. Um, I really enjoyed the video of the pediatric room. How will you share that with the public and get that story out?
Uh, so we're working with AHS. They have their own media relations team. And they're gonna be putting together sort of a press release to to get that information out. Uh, we also have social media channels, but they're in their infancy because we had been waiting for our CRA number to come through to to really kick that off. So uh, we'll be kind of sharing those stories through that as well. Um, you know, it's something we foresee with our social media channels is we want to to share the success stories of what's happening. We want to acknowledge donors and people that are helping to make those things happen. Um, as well as kind of promoting the foundation, the needs of Cochrane and and what we're hearing from people.
Great work. Look forward to hearing about the next projects.
Thank you, uh, Councilperson.
Mr. Kimmett, Mr. Winters, um, just a quick question about the Erdry Health Foundation. I know that that's the genesis of what spun this idea off. What what sorts of wins did Erdry achieve through their foundation? Are there things that you're um looking to copy from from their lead? Or I'm not really clear on what what Erdry's been up to and what they've achieved today.
When they first opened their twenty-four-seven, they actually didn't get any extra funding. And you might know that they actually were closed some for periods of time during that time. Uh, so what they're actually up to now to promote, I know they're looking at maybe a new facility. Uh, and and maybe the mayor uh has been in contact with their mayor. He might be able to give you an update uh with that. Uh, but uh, I know they they had problems once they opened their twenty-four-seven because they didn't get any extra funding. So we have learned some things from them where we want to progress uh when that when when we get to that particular stage.
Okay, great. I'm uh, I'm hopeful that the minister takes you up on the tour of our urgent care. I I expect if you continue to try, we'll we'll eventually achieve that and um uh, thank you, as everyone else around the table said, for everything you're doing and happy to support in any way I can, we can.
I was at a, I was at a medical conference and her staff, her assistant deputy minister assured us that she would be coming. Uh, she just hasn't given us a a time on on that. Uh, so we want to make sure that uh she sees what we've got uh and also what we want to do in the future, so.
Yep, wonderful. I think we've seen it in all um, all minister roles and all all uh issues with advocacy in in our provincial government, and it's probably everywhere where the more attention you can grab, the more uh, time you can spend, uh, the more aware they are of you, the more likely it is that um positive outcomes happen, so. Thank you for what you're doing and uh thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Great. So I think I just have uh maybe one or two questions for you myself. Um, so you've clearly been able to identify some different capital projects you've been able to fundraise and make a difference for uh in the space. Um, it's been identified for the the need, the goal is to get, you know, twenty-four-seven. Um, are you able to, you know, fundraise for operational costs as well? Is that is that kind of a goal that you'd be able to chip in hundreds of thousands of dollars a year or whatever it might take to get more staff on, or are you limited to capital contributions?
No, the 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 operational uh, um, the manpower is going to be left up to AHS. Uh, we're looking at not just using the urgent care, but there could be other organizations in the community that could use whatever. Right? So let's say someone got a new AED in their business and they wanted their staff trained, and we had the funding, we'd be able to do that. Uh, just to go back to uh the security system, uh, you probably know that the victim services now are being taken over by the province, right? Just like they did uh AH, uh, the 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 ambulance service back in two thousand and nine. Uh, and they had a pot of money, uh, and one hour was away, we had uh our vice chair uh attend a meeting along with someone from Cochrane Urgent Care and made a proposal uh to them that uh the the monies that we get from victim services would help fund that project. Uh, so we're just in the, I guess, communication stage to see how much money we're gonna get with that. And we're we're hoping that AHS can contribute uh their part of the funding, that then we'll be able to get that project complete.
Okay, yeah, great news. Um, and I guess just one final question. If you have just, you know, one message you want council to and the community to clearly hear, um, what is it?
Well, I think uh the mayor said it very clearly that we're both working toward the same goal to improve healthcare within within the town of Cochrane and area, because we're called the Cochrane and Area Health Foundation. And we have a rep that lives in Rocky View, and we've made a presentation to their council as well. Uh, but we want to work together. Uh, and the ultimate goal is to ensure that our residents of Cochrane have the best care possible. And uh, you guys can do your end, the political end, and we'll do our end. Uh, and I think between both of them, uh, that we'll be able to provide the best care possible for for the residents of Cochrane.
Excellent.
Yeah, one thing I'll add to that too, um, I saw a speech a while back and the person talked about ways you can give, and they said that you can be giving of your time, you can be giving of your money, you can, and you can be giving of your voice. And so that's what we'd hope from all of you guys. That's what we try and do. Uh, people in the community that you can get involved, you can be a part of the future of healthcare in Cochrane in any of those ways. It doesn't need to be all three of those ways, but we all have a voice and and we can all share that.
Excellent. Oh, yeah, well, thank you very much, gentlemen, and you're completely correct that in order to make a difference, it's collaboration and partnerships and building relationships. So thank you very much for coming tonight and taking that first step and in catching us up on all your great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Um, moving on to uh business, item five A, public engagement update. Um, would like to invite Ms. Hyberek, our manager of intergovernmental relations.
Good evening, Mayor Janon, Deputy Mayor McFadden, and Council. I am really pleased to be here with you tonight to talk about some of our recent public engagement init- initiatives and the feedback we've received from the community on public engagement. The International Association of Public Participation defines public engagement as an intentional process with the purpose of working in inclusive and respectful ways to shape decisions, actions, impact, or change. Following the two thousand twenty-three strategic planning session, council and administration provided clear direction to revitalize a public engagement portfolio. To support this, we invested in a new public engagement platform that provided more robust engagement opportunities as well as the ability ability to develop detailed reporting. And council invested in this in a new role for the organization, a dedicated public engagement advisor, Alyssa Court, who joined our team last June. Reflecting on the goal of ensuring community awareness of our public engagement platform, we launched a new marketing campaign to inform residents about Let's Talk Cochrane. And we've made significant um investment in re, sorry, and we've, and as a result of these investments, our team has successfully delivered on a number of engagements this year, including the Name Our Fleet campaign, Envision Cochrane twenty fifty, the Age Friendly Initiative, budget engagement that just recently closed, the Guess Our Population campaign, uh, the Cochrane Trade Show just last month. Um, Your Town, Your Transit survey, which just launched this last week. Um, an upcoming United Way fundraiser and engagement barbecue, as well as a number of engagements that are planned for the fall, supporting the community services portfolio. In the fall of two thousand twenty-three, administration initiated public engagement with a goal of creating a better understanding of how the community views public engagement and where our efforts should be focused. To support this work, we launched a survey and a focus group. This research methodology was chosen to combine the strengths of both qualitative and quantitative feedback. A significant marketing campaign went alongside this to ensure awareness of the engagement and a variety of opportunities to participate were provided. These included a dedicated webpage and online survey on our Let's Talk Cochrane portal, a paper survey available in the Cochrane Eagle, as well as being dropped off at the Bethany Care Center in the Seniors on the Bow, and information shared on a variety of channels, including our website, newspaper advertising, digital signs, community road signs, social media posts, radio ads, Cochrane Business Newsletter, posters throughout the community with a QR code to provide a passive place-based way to catch people where they are and allow them to provide their input. As a result of these efforts, eighteen hundred people visited the Let's Talk Cochrane public engagement page with fourteen new people registering for the site. In total from this, we captured six hundred and twenty-seven survey responses and twenty-seven focus group participants. Sorry, I didn't click all the way through my presentation. Considering equity and inclusion is always an important part of our engagements, we worked with Chantel Barber, Cochrane's Community Diversity and Inclusion Liaison Liaison to reach out to a number of community groups and associations identified on this slide. Ensuring people who are impacted have the opportunity to provide impact, we are continuing to build out our list of impacted parties that we can draw upon for each engagement. Um, and Mr. Winter has actually reached out to me a few weeks ago and asked to be included in that list, so I'm happy to say that we're gaining some momentum in that space as well. From these efforts and the registration provided by the survey and focus group participants, we were able to demonstrate the variety of participants who provided their feedback. So we, as I said earlier, we hosted a focus group um in late two thousand twenty-three and we engaged a consultant to facilitate this, helping to ensure objective feedback was captured. Similarly, to ensure objective representation, we worked with a consultant to help us ensure randomized participation in the focus group and ratios representative of our population. We offered free parking, food, refreshments, welcome children, and provided a small monetary incentive to reduce barriers to participation. The purpose of the focus group was twofold, to understand what was working well and what we could, what can be approved upon. Participants were quick to identify the variety of ways used to inform the public about the different engagement opportunities. In terms of areas identified for improvement, they had, they outlined um in-person engagement venues sometimes don't meet participant needs, a general lack of engagement opportunities in the community, a lack of clarity about purpose and influence, and perception that in input will not be considered. We asked them to help us to provide some solutions. And a couple of, some of the things that they identified was to update our website, which we're pleased to say is done, um, creating an app, which we're pleased to say is in progress, and increased communication through a newsletter or direct email. In addition, they were looking for more surveys, um, distributing surveys directly to households, incorporate public engagement into project planning, hold more town meetings, open houses and or discussion groups, be more visible at community events and use them to gather input, ensure engagement is meaningful, accessible, and includes diverse representation, and provide uh refreshments and snacks. Participants were asked what successful public engagement would look like for the town of Cochrane, and they identified town hall meetings on evenings or weekends with council present, a dedicated engagement platform, which we have with our Let's Talk Cochrane site, transparency on why, how, and what decisions are being made, opportunities for people to share their feedback directly with council, and consistently sharing back with participants in the community what was heard at engagement sessions. and consistently sharing back with participants in the community what was heard at engagement sessions and what was decided. I would please, I'm pleased to note at the conclusion of our focus group, the participants independently identified their appreciation for the cross-section of community members in attendance, specifically age, gender and how long they lived in Cochrane. It was great to see the diversity that showed up in that, in that session. So the survey, as I said, we had six hundred and twenty-seven people complete the survey. Of note, over half of the respondents indicated that they had never participated in a Cochrane engagement before. What we heard was quite similar to what we heard in the focus group. Participants want their input to be heard, considered and implemented. This includes transparency on timelines, decision-making and how input will be used. Accessibility is important. Hold engagement activities in convenient locations or events in the community. Create a safe space for people to participate. Provide flexible options for participation. Respondents indicated that they are interested in both online and in-person opportunities. And again, participants suggested offering snacks and refreshments at in-person engagement activities. Recognizing the importance of hearing from the community, we asked for feedback on what would encourage people to participate. The top three responses were knowing that my input will make a difference, having access to information about the topic and understanding how my input will be used. So what did we learn from all of this? This was a great opportunity, both the survey and the focus group, for us to hear directly from the community on how they want to be engaged and the best way for us to go about doing so. A critical component of our engagement is ensuring participants are fully aware of how their input will be used. And as we plan for upcoming engagements, we continue to focus on ensuring that our public engagements are intentional and inclusive of all interested parties and that we are applying a consistent approach. And I think the other thing that we've learned really this year is engagement can be fun. People want to, many people want to influence decisions, but they also want to help brainstorm solutions to problems and exercise their creativity. And I think where we've seen that is our Name Our, Name Our Fleet campaign and just the number of people that participated. I think we had nearly a thousand survey responses to that alone, as well as our Guess Our Population campaign where we had, again, I think about nine hundred people submit answers to that. And the other thing we learned is we need to go where people are. People, that's, we're very clearly hearing that, showing up in spaces where people are already at and not just expecting them to come to us and offering a variety of opportunities for people to participate. I believe we've implemented a lot of this already, but I think our next step is our policy review. So we do have, we have an existing public engagement policy which was initially adopted in two thousand and six, was updated in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen, and we are, administration will be bringing that policy forward to council soon for your consideration and feedback. That's all I had for my presentation, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hyberek, for your update. As you know, public engagement and formalizing it and growing and improving that is a real passion of mine and it's really great to see how you've worked really hard and looks like quite successfully to build in those IEP two principles. And I certainly applaud the key learnings coming out of that focus group. Yeah, thank you for that. I will turn it over to my colleagues, Councilor Fedeko.
Nothing excites me more than this topic, actually, period, when it comes to council, council things. First of all, kudos. I think that you have really made a big, big improvement in the right direction when it comes to public engagement. I think there's still some things, obviously, that we need to work on. And some of those I just wanted to highlight and, and they're not of critique, they're just of more of maybe hopefully things that we can look as a council to implement. One of the things that I'd like to see brought back, and this was a conversation that I just had last week, we used to have the community association meetings where our council was invited. I would like to see that being brought back so that we can sit around table with our executive leadership, of course, to be able to hear the concerns of the community. Because I was told that there was a big meeting, one happened in Glen Eagles, but as a council member, I didn't even know that meeting was happening, I know the mayor attended. But I also think that it's very important that if, if those meetings are being held in a public space, that perhaps all of council be invited so that we can all hear the issues that are coming out of that particular community. I think it's super important. And I actually really love those meetings when we did have them because I found I learned a lot of stuff that without living there, I would never know actually existed. I would like to see council to have some more for, like, let's, kind of like our, oh my god, Facebook Live event where we did, where, you know, people can be able to interact with council. It is super important that when it comes to engagement, I understand that, you know, there's many forms of engagement, some that we have to tell, some that, you know, we're directing. But I still hear very much the biggest complaint that I hear is that nobody's listening to me. We, we tell, we aren't hearing. And I think we really need to step it up to hear and just stop speaking. So whatever it looks like from all of us sitting around the table, I don't know what that looks like. Perhaps, you know, come up with some different implementation skills where we learned some things from the last one to better it. But I think it's super important for us to get back out there and to be able to, to listen and not just tell everybody what we're doing. The focus group, will that be coming back again? Like, will we be doing another focus group again this year to maybe say, look at what we have implemented? What are some of the things that we're still not kind of hitting the mark on? I don't know if that's a possibility.
I don't think we've considered that specifically right now, but I would say the, the value that we saw from the focus group and the, the conversation that we had was invaluable, I would say. So whether it's specifically around public engagement that we'd want to go back and do a focus group on again, or whether we want to consider a different topic. I know with the transit survey that we're doing right now, that is something that they're considering as part of that engagement. And so we are looking at that as an opportunity for sure.
Yeah, and, and maybe it's even going back out to the focus group and saying, hey, so like after this full entire year, like what have you noticed, like are there challenges that you would still identify that maybe we're not getting, right? Kind of getting that feedback brought back again, I absolutely agree on what you said about we have to go to where the people are. We have to offer things more than on a, you know, hey, we're doing an open house on, from six to eight on a Thursday, right? Like, you have to hit people in different locations, different days, it's, it's got to be a little bit of everywhere. And I think Camore, I think Councilor McFadden brought that attention to me before on some of their open houses is that they actually offer them different times, different days, different venues, right? So that you're hitting a cross-section of the population. I like the idea of, of being out there at major events and being able to offer. But I think, and the other thing I wanted to give kudos for is, is the signage. And especially during like major catastrophes and things, I, I think the town has really, really stepped up and the signage becomes very important to allow that messaging to be heard. I, I wanted to give kudos to that because I have noticed. And again, I think really it's, it's about us being out there because it is the one thing that I hear all the time is that where is council, right? And, and I think we need to change that and we need to put ourselves out there. And some of those conversations and those comments are not easy to hear, but that is our role. We were elected by the public and we have to be out there to answer to the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Fedeko, Councilor Reed.
Yeah, I would say that I, I think the, there's been a marked indifference. I mean, this is clearly a strategic perspective that council put forward, both in terms of money and support. And I think it really has made headway. So thank you for that. I think all members of council are passionate about public engagement and, and I'm glad that we've evolved to the point where administration is leading us but involving council where, where appropriate and necessary. I think that there have to be multiple methods of seeking public engagement. And if there's anything I've learned and read over the last little while, it's certainly that, that there is no one kind of format that actually solves or addresses all of our needs. The two questions I have, those are my comments. The two questions I have is, and your report actually is, is fabulous, but I wanted to speak to it in case somebody is watching it other than Jeff's parents. How do you, how do we achieve a representative sample size so that we don't get the same five people coming out? I'm being pejorative now in terms of that. But how do we, how do we get an appropriate sample size in terms of being able to represent our community? The focus group that you did sounds like it achieved that. But how do we move that forward in, in the other methods that we use?
Well, I think the biggest part of it to start off is communication, right? Making people under, or helping people to understand why it's important that they want to provide their feedback and what the feedback's going to be used for. And I, I mean, we heard that from the people, right? That's why we asked the question of what would encourage you to participate, so we would understand that. The more we can do to communicate and market the fact that these engagements are happening, I think the more buy-in that we're going to get. I know one of the questions we receive quite often is why do we require registration on our, on our Let's Talk Cochrane site? If you've registered for that site, you've likely noticed that there's periodic emails that come out when new engagements are launched. We actually connect with you and say, hey, did you see this new engagement? We'd like your feedback. It also helps us to track some of the demographic data, so we, we can look at that representative sample of what, who are we hearing from and making sure that we're hearing from people throughout our population and across the community. So all of those things are helping us to build that. I think the focus group specifically, we, as I said earlier, we did engage a consultant to do a randomized poll in our community to ensure that we hit that mark. So if we're wanting to get to that level of detail, that, that requires a budget investment to support that, if we want to continue to go forward in that way. But I think that we are seeing huge strides even by just the direct reach out we're doing to different community groups. That's helping to make, to make some changes. And Councilor Fedeko spoke about the community associations. We are even reaching out directly to community associations to make sure we're, we're spreading the news along all of these different channels.
Right, so from the public's perspective then, clearly we're doing all that we can in terms of being able to get a representative sample size in terms of our community. The other question I had was, how do we balance securing public engagement without creating expectations that we would struggle to address? And so for example, the same five people may have approached me about the COLT survey, which has recently come out. And there are some people who have taken away from that, that there are expectations about how we're going to change the system and, and it's creating an illusion that I don't know, I'm not sure that will be an appetite or an illusion that we may not be able to address. And, and one of those five people, there were, you know, when I said, well, I'm not certain that we're going to be able to do all that, there was kind of a backlash, right? And I'm like, well, I mean, what are you guys doing, you know, why are you elected for? And how do you, how do you balance the, that appetite against getting public engagement and not creating expectations in the public that, that we may not be able to, to meet? How, I don't know how you do that. Do you put like, I was thinking maybe put a rider on the front end of it and saying, you know, we're, we're seeking public engagement, recognize that there are budgetary or economic constraints that might be associated with this or whatever, so that there's kind of a rider at the front of it so that people, oh, okay, you know, I'm being asked my opinion, but it won't necessarily go that way. Like, the presentation tonight about the library, right? I mean, there was a conceptual thing, it had nothing to do with the library, it just is an example, right? But, you know, to Morgan's point, people might take away from that if they were watching this or hearing about this. Oh, this is what we're going to do, the library. Well, we're not, right? But that was just, this was just a conceptual thing. So I don't know how you balance that.
Yeah, thank you. I think that, thank, thank you through the chair to Councilor Reed for raising what's an important point. I think we saw consistently through the responses to the public engagement that people want to understand how their input fits into the whole process and how it impacts it. And I think partly that's a case-by-case basis, it depends what we're asking people and, on what subject. In a case like, I think the COLT Transit, which is an important and active engagement we're doing right now, that the presentation piece, I think, is where that would be really important, which is to bring that back and identify how that information is helping us think about the problem that we are facing or the challenges and informing the solutions. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we can implement everything that comes out of that. I think we see that pretty regularly as, as part of it. I also think it's a little bit of building of muscle, right? Like you have to be consistent in this process and, and help our community and participants become more familiar with how that looks and feels. And I, I would say, suggest that we just have a little bit of work to do in that area where people need to go through this process a few times to see how that all, all flows. Most importantly, ensuring that the information we gather is publicly and clearly incorporated into the decision-making process. So it's in front of council, it's available, it's articulated, so that when you're making the decision point, you have that information in front of you. And I don't think that binds council to anything. You're always balancing needs with, you know, resources, constraints or, or economic or financial realities as part of that. So it, it's never going to be easy, I think, to manage expectations. And I, I'm a little bit cautious of the front-ending of some of that because I think we don't want to put downward pressure on people's interest in participating. But wherever possible, is guiding them as to where that input is going to show up in the process, I think, is the best possible piece we can do there.
Yeah, good, I, I was just suggesting, and maybe the why you, you coached it, not in terms of downing it, but just kind of saying, you know, realistically, we're looking at, at being able to gather whatever your opinion is and take it under advisement, but doesn't necessarily we're going to enact it. Now, the second part you wouldn't have to say, but that it is just under advisement. But anyways, overall, I think it's just been a great, great move forward and your efforts have been rewarding, I think, for the community and for Cochrane Town Council.
My apologies, Councilor Reed, if I may just add one piece there that I think is important there. I think the questions you ask are really, really important, where when you ask someone to talk about what they want and need from their transit system, you're getting the ideas or the concepts back that are meaningful to them rather than a positioning that is a, hey, tell us, you know, a very specific kind of outcome that's, that's driven by that. So how those pieces are framed, I think, can really help with that expectation piece as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flowers.
Yeah, there was sure lots of great information in there. One thing that jumped out to me was seventy-five percent of the people said they want to help with solutions to Cochrane's problems. So I'm glad that we're asking them and it's really good to hear that. And hopefully we can create lots of opportunities to gather their ideas. And speaking of transit, when will we hear the, when does it close and when will we hear the report?
Well, I would probably defer to Ms. Delorme on that question, but I believe it closes mid-June, I think June seventh. I'm, you're making me pull from the back of my head, Councilor Flowers. And I'm not sure when she's bringing that forward, I would have to, I would defer that to her.
Okay. And one other question, I don't know if you have the answer, about the census, is it closed? And when will we hear who is the closest to picking the number?
I will defer that one to Mr. Derek Cott.
Yeah, thank you. I, I do, actually may do a double deferral here to Lee. She's not actually working directly with the census, but generally speaking, you know, the census is closed and I believe we're just tabulating the results of that. And I'm not sure exactly when we're planning on the report, do you have visibility on that still, Lee? So still working through some data cleanup there and closing the loop on a few, but we're in the final stages of that. So it'll be, you know, relatively soon.
Okay, thanks. I look forward to seeing the new policy and what you've done to change it and update it. Thank you.
I would just share with the Transit Survey, I think since it was posted on Thursday, we've had nearly two hundred responses already to the survey. It's really good.
Mayor Janong.
Thank you. I guess to build on the kudos, I think we have come a long way. You and your team deserve a lot of credit for the work that you've done. It's showing, the results are there. I, I really appreciate the, the tactics and the, I guess, the muscle we're building in, in public engagement. And for all the reasons that everybody has, has outlined today, specifically the webpage. Also, maybe a question around the app. I look forward to that as another tool. Do you have an update on where that's at? I think, I'll just, I'll stop there.
Sure. So we are currently working on the marketing strategy for that. The app is still in development. Our goal is that the app will be ready for testing by end of June, so hopefully launching this summer.
Oh, perfect. And I think that will be another important tool, not the tool, but another important tool. And I think as you've outlined in your presentation, there are many and we have to use them all, all the time. On the, if I can be a little bit of a critic now, one of the things I think that as we put the tactics in place and are building the muscle, one of the things I would like to have us work on is finding more, and I, I think you guys are, are doing this work and maybe it's in the developmental stages and I'm, I'm happy for that to be the answer. But I think we need to do some more work on finding our identity, our voice as a community. Sometimes I feel like we're a bit too corporate in our, in our messaging, whether that be a media release or a Facebook or social media post. Sometimes it becomes a little bit too, I'm, I'm lost in the, in the jargon. And I think, so if, if I'm feeling that as someone who's here every day and, and speaking that language, I can, I can imagine how frustrating sometimes it might be to be a resident who's just trying to find something quickly and, and learn something. So I think there's two avenues to this and I, I obviously, I understand that, you know, we have to know our audience and sometimes in a media release, there, it's a, an international audience maybe and then sometimes local. But the, the other aspect of this is around the language. And often, and I think the community association meeting that I was invited to last week in Glen Eagles was, I, I was acting as an interpreter, I felt like. And it's, a, a lot of times these issues arise in our community and I find that council or myself are put in the position to interpret between what is happening. And we do, I think we do. we do a good job in telling the story, but often it's in, I use this term, municipales, where it's bylaw and policy-driven language, where I think we need to find a way to just communicate in the language that easily is understandable from everyone's perspective. So I think, I think we have more work to do in that regard. Other than that, I struggle with giving some criticism, but all in all, huge leap forward. Thank you for your work.
So that looks like, for now, the wrap-up of council questions. I did want to say, yes, I've been very impressed with the progress, and sometimes it is honestly just a little thing, just driving around the community and seeing the sandwich boards announcing those public engagement opportunities. It's just great. Even if people aren't attending it, they know that that's happening. So sometimes it's just those little things, and as has been echoed by my colleagues, we just need to be engaging with people where they're at, as opposed to asking them to come to us. Peace. And I love the idea of the focus group, and I'm hoping we can build on that a little bit. And I appreciate also the authenticity of the report back. It's like, one of the critiques of the group was like that lack of transparency. It's like, okay, what's going on? How are these decisions made? How is my voice impacting it? Does it at all? And it's like, you know, if a tree falls in a forest and nobody hears it, it doesn't happen. And so I think we just need to build into that space more and report back, and just be like, you know, you participated here, so, you know, not only report back to the focus group that they're helping to, you know, the final result of the public engagement strategy, but also to the community, you know, that piece. Just that, that reporting back, I think, is really important. And I do agree with Councilor Fedeko, I'd love to be able to reengage with the community associations as a counselor again. That was an initiative I was always proud to be a part of, and it's great to be able to hear from that group, kind of the grassroots concerns that you kind of miss if you're not, you know, up at Sunset all the time or Heritage Hills, and to be able to hear those. So I'd love to be able to participate in those. And so, yeah, and then a question, I guess, not related, or I guess maybe even back to that theme of reporting back, not tied particularly to this presentation, but we did launch our advocacy strategy, and I really do feel, especially with the Cochrane Health Association stepping up tonight, that we really should be reporting back to the community, and whether that's through our council meetings or other mechanisms, on what, how we're advancing our advocacy strategy, you know, where are the successes, what have we been doing, those type of things. So I'd really like to see that. But at the end of the day, I really do want to celebrate progress, and I think that's there, and it'll never be perfect, but it's better today than it was yesterday. So thank you for you and your team's work in making that happen.
Thank you.
Councilor Nagel.
I know you were trying to wrap up, but your comments just sparked a thought in my mind. Something I think would be really cool if we could, what we could do to report back or close the loop. We often, when we put things forward in presentations, we say, like, it aligns with the sustainability plan here, or aligns with council's strategic plan here. If we could reference specific community engagements where the community said, like, we want to enhance green spaces, and then we have a project coming forward that is, you know, enhancing a green space, if we could, in the presentation or in the PDF summaries, highlight, say, you know, this is what we heard in the spring 2023, and now we're actually taking action on that item. I think it'd be a really cool thing to see in our presentations.
Excellent. I'm glad I inspired your brilliance. Does anybody else have any final brilliant comments, ideas, suggestions before we wrap up? I know, I'm just going to let that go then. Yes, Ms. Harek, thank you very much for your presentation, and I look forward to seeing the next steps.
Thank you so much.
So, following that, we have, to the best of my knowledge, no in-camera presentations, which means we are now adjourning our meeting at seven thirty-four. Meeting adjourned.